Commissioners Court of Brazos County will begin regular session on August the 30th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is invocation of Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. Commissioner Ford will lead them.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for the rain. We also appreciate the opportunity to be able to do the good work of Brazos County. We are so fortunate living here in the Brazos Valley. Lord, we ask that you look over our first responders, our military, and our educators as they go about their work. Lord, we just ask that you give us the wisdom to do your will and not just our own. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
That was hearty. That was hearty. Thank you for just getting going.
Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And we've got a few people that wanted to speak. Dixie Boland.
My name is Dixie Boland. My son is Larry Boland. He's incarcerated at Brazos County Jail, has been since April the 8th, 21. He was involved in the Kentmore Cabinet Incident. We have some complaints against the jail. I spoke with Mr. Stewart last week, and he informed me there's just going to be some things we're going to disagree on. So I don't know how much will be resolved. I hope all of it. He has never been able to make a call to us since he has been in there for whatever reason. He's changed his PIN. It seems as though they're trying to block his calls. When he was first incarcerated in there, he was given a tetanus shot. He said it was very painful, made his arm go numb. I have had them numerous times, and that should not happen. I'm not sure if there's something else in the shot, a possible chip or what's going on. We do know there are mental games being played at Brazos County Jail. I have contact with other parents, wives, and they are telling the same, that the inmates are complaining about mental programs. Totally horrible, in my opinion. At one time, an inmate by the name of Thomas Corey Langford was my son's roommate for about three weeks. When I investigated him, there is no record of him ever being in Brazos County Jail. Since that time, my son has seen him again. He was not in his housing unit, but he saw him again. I investigated him again, and there's no record of him ever being in the jail. So it looks as though they are using him as a decoy for whatever reason. Life threats by inmates and staff increased the 1st of January '22. At the same time, $800 disappeared out of his commissary account. He and I spoke about, as well as he and his father, multiple times on the inmate videos. And all of a sudden, the $800 reappeared in his commissary account. We do not know where it went. I thought that was very strange. Inmate visits are often cut off by the videos, and the majority of the time that we notice when we are talking about his legal case. He had three attorneys, fire all three. They were all corrupt. His father is going to be his lawful counsel. He has every right through our Constitution to have a counsel. You do not have to have an attorney, as they try to make you think you do. They have blocked five pieces of legal mail that we have tried to send him since January, since Smart Jail Mail took over. They sent it back to us and say it must come from a bona fide legal office, which is not true. You can send, anyone can send legal mail to an inmate. We got all four packages back. The fifth package, which is the second package we sent, was 101 pages. We never received that back. We always got the green cards back, so we know it was delivered to the jail. And we also spoke with a Sergeant Peterson at the jail, and he claims that they can only receive legal mail from a law office, which is totally not true. How can you ever have a counsel if you cannot get legal mail to someone? So that's totally corrupt. That is mail fraud. As of January, when Smart Jail Mail took over, all cards, letters must be sent to Florida, a whole nother state. He cannot even receive a card or letter from anyone. They, at Florida, Smart Jail Mail, they put it on a computer. After they scan it, then they trash the mail. The inmates have to go to a machine in their housing unit to get their mail off a machine. I think that's totally wrong. That is mail fraud. You cannot mess with people's mail. I have asked them, are they federally trained? And Mr. Stewart last week admitted, no. They are... Okay, that's fine.
All right.
I knew it was a lot. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all for listening, and I hope we get some things changed. I've got nine pages here, so that's not even all of it at all. But we'll keep trying.
Thank you. Sabrina Wren.
Howdy. My name is Sabrina Wren. I'm a junior at A&amp;M, and I believe the MSC should remain an early voting location. The MSC is a unique opportunity for early voting, as A&amp;M has a large population of new voters. I don't know about y'all, but my first time voting was intimidating, as new experiences often are. Luckily, I was able to vote in my first election right on campus. At the time, I didn't know a lot about elections. In fact, I didn't even know it was time to vote. That is, until I saw the "Vote Here" signs in front of the MSC on my way to class. And this was for a presidential election. I didn't even know other elections existed at the time, as surprisingly, many new voters don't. This is one extremely important role the MSC plays in encouraging new voters to vote, especially in local elections. It creates awareness that an election is occurring and that it is time to perform your civic duty. After I saw the signs, I was able to vote that day between classes. If the MSC wasn't an early voting location, I wouldn't even have known it was time to vote, much less have had the time to vote. I had a full course load and rarely ever made it off campus. My days consisted of going to class, studying on campus, studying in my dorm, and sleeping. I don't know that I would have had the time, or, sorry, or honestly, the energy to vote if I didn't have the MSC as an option. The MSC is a convenient location for the largest population of first-time voters in Brazos County. My experience voting for the first time helped ease some of the worries I had about voting. And afterwards, I was confident in my abilities to vote in the next election. By encouraging and supporting new voters, we are more likely to help them form a positive relationship with voting, and they will be more likely to use their right to vote in future elections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christina Samuel.
Good morning. I first want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and to share my perspective. My name is Christina Samuel, and I am a Senior Biology Honors major at Texas A&amp;M. I am also a student organizer, being the president and founder of Move Texas Chapter here at Texas A&amp;M, aiming to empower young people to be civically engaged, especially in their state and local elections. I'm here to oppose the removal of the Memorial Student Center, also known as the MSC, as an early voting location for the November elections this year. Whether this was the intention of the commission or not, this decision will be disenfranchising thousands of faculty, staff, and of course, students and their ability to vote early and easily. In 2020, 80% of Brazos County voted early. Students in particular enjoy early voting since we're able to vote in between classes with much shorter lines. The first time I voted, I was a freshman here at Texas A&amp;M, ready to cast my ballot in the February 2020 primaries. I counted down the minutes of my Biology 112 lecture and until I could sprint to the MSC and cast my vote before my night lab later that day. I thought I had allocated plenty of time, about three hours. Little did I know that that line would wrap around the building several times, and given that I was lacking both time and a car, I was facing my only option. I barely made it in time to vote and go to class. However, I was the only person in my friend group who voted that day. And keep in mind, this was a presidential election year. I waited three hours in line to wait on Election Day, when there was early voting in the MSC. Can you imagine how much longer students have to wait now? To remove the MSC as an early voting location will make it harder to vote and will result in lower voter turnout. College is when most people vote for the first time and is more likely to build good, consistent voting habits and then be lifelong voter. Invest in your democracy. Reinstate the MSC as an early voting location for this November 2022 election season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Verun Fu...
Maybe you can say the name.
You're going to get the pronunciation in just a second.
I better quit there.
No, I get it. 14 letters. Good morning to the members of the Commissioners Court, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you guys this afternoon. My name is Verun Vopoleterium. Vopoleterium, it's okay. Totally good if you can't pronounce it. And I'm a student from Texas A&amp;M, and I'm here in support of bringing back the MSC as an early voting location. The MSC has been a location for early voting since before I was even here, and has been a location for a longer time. Taken away will be a break from this established tradition. And as students, we've even asked for second voting locations on the engineering side of campus, on West Campus. We were told no, and that's fine. We had the MSC. For both locations we've taken away from students on campus feels like a slap in the face, especially since we have a population that wants to vote. We have a population that wants to be civically engaged. Texas A&amp;M has a large population without access to cars, and it being all the way at Texas Avenue is, quite frankly, a lot to ask for for those students. On a good day, walking from one of our, I think the closest living area, which is the Commons, it takes about 40 minutes to get there and back. And that's not even including the line that it takes to vote. For people working jobs, giving away 40 minutes is also a big deal. But for college students without cars, who are not only working jobs but also taking a minimum of 12 credit hours, this is a huge time drain. Even for students with cars, this is on Texas Avenue. Texas Avenue is infamous for how long it takes to get by, especially during rush hour, which is when most students will be able to vote. Rush hour is when work is done, when classes are done, and when most people are free in general. This isn't even concerning the traffic that will happen when it's people from all over College Station coming in to vote at Texas, the New City Hall. The New City Hall being an early voting location will only make it hard for students to vote and to even want to. There's no buses going there. There's, quite frankly, a lot to ask for for them. And we can sidestep a lot of those issues by reinstating the MSC as an early voting location, as it's a premier stop for students who want to eat something and relax. Most people after classes will go to the MSC and honestly, peruse the place and socialize. And the MSC is, quite frankly, an easy location for everyone in general, because also, for parking, for people with cars across Brazos County, people can park there at a huge parking garage compared to the new parking locations at the New City Hall, which, quite frankly, doesn't seem to have that much parking in comparison. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin Pierce.
Good morning, and first of all, thank y'all so much for having us here. I'm glad we get to speak out and force our opinions here. I'm Kevin Pierce. I'm a sophomore Nuclear Engineering major at Texas A&amp;M. And similar to some of the other speakers, my first time voting was last semester. And even, it was the May election, so there weren't that many people voting there. Even then, I did have to devote some time out of my day, like probably an hour at least, maybe two, to go, get in line, go register and vote. And with this removal of the MSC voting location, the reality is, it's going to be a lot harder to vote, and there's going to be a lot of people that are not going to vote. Last May, it took me a lot of effort to convince my friends to come out and vote. And with this voting location, where people have to drive or they're going to have to walk, like maybe an hour, I think for me and my friends, probably be an hour, maybe an hour and a half of walking, there's going to be a lot of people that aren't voting. It's going to be disenfranchising voters. And even with the voting at the MSC, which is super easy, we still have to convince some people to vote. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mariah Moya.
Hello, I'm Mariah Moya. I'm here as a student at A&amp;M and as a co-president of Aggies for Latinx Politics, Heritage, and Arts. I'm in favor of returning the early polling location to the Memorial Student Center. As a college student and a minority, I felt at times that my opinions and engagement within voting have been held at a lower level of importance. However, with the placement of the voting locations at the MSC, I felt more encouragement to engage within matters of the community and that my voice matters. When discussing this changing of location with my peers, they often express similar sentiments and feel as though this change indicates that their voices are being silenced. The Memorial Student Center is a necessary polling location because it provides a space which can be accessed any day that thousands of students and employees are at campus during the early voting time period. Having the MSC as a voting location only on Election Day wouldn't be as beneficial, especially considering many students like me have midterms that week. I, for one, will be having a total of three, and will be going through a very hard time. Many students, especially those without vehicles, will find it harder to leave, especially if they have jobs, large workloads, or other time commitments. Additionally, workers who have long hours will find it more difficult to take additional time out of their schedule to vote at a location off of campus. This will also be the first time many students will be able to vote, and without the polling location on campus, the voter turnout amongst college students, as well as the workers, won't be as prominent. And despite efforts to inform people of this change, many will be left confused. Having a polling location at the MSC shows Brazos County support to the community, first-time voters, and the continuation of a tradition of voting, much of which can be seen through excited students, professors, and workers wearing their "I Voted" stickers and encouraging others to do the same. Keeping the MSC as a polling location is an important issue that many of us were unable to formally discuss during the given time period in the summer when many of us were away. Now that we are back, we ask that you reinstate the Memorial Student Center as an early voting location, as it's what's most beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Christopher Lavender.
Howdy. My name is Christopher Liverde. I know that name's a little bit of a doozy. French words are kind of like that. You don't pronounce many of the letters. But I first and foremost, thank you for the time. I am also, like the other students here, testifying on the voting location at the MSC. Now, over the summer, when I heard the news of the early voting location being moved away from the MSC, I was incredibly disappointed and, quite frankly, somewhat confused. The MSC voting location, or MSC as a voting location, has been a longstanding staple of voting in this county, and I couldn't really, for the life of me, figure out why it had been removed. There was some reason given, mostly just an acknowledgement that while it's convenient for the students to have it there, it is inconvenient for those who are part of the non-student population, who may not be familiar with navigating campus. However, the convenience of the MSC as a voting location cannot be overstated. The MSC is at the heart of campus. I personally walk by it several times a day, and I know everybody else does as well. Having that available as an early voting location is, quite frankly, game-changing for us students. I have been here during election times, and even in 2020, a year in which 80% of Brazos County participated in early voting, the line outside the MSC on Election Day still stretched practically from here to Houston. So to take away even the opportunity to vote early is one thing that will only magnify this problem. Additionally, off-campus voting in that area is something that already existed. For people who are not part of the student population, it is essentially a non-issue. So what the move has done is essentially to create or to solve a problem that does not exist and to insert a problem where one did not exist before. When you factor in grad students, Texas A&amp;M has about 70,000 students. Not quite sure how that stacks up with the census data of the population in the area in general, but no matter which way you cut that, we are an absolutely massive portion of the student body here. From basically anywhere that one lives on campus, it's about a 30-minute walk, which in the middle of the school day is not particularly viable for most people in the middle of their classes. Additionally, while I personally am fortunate enough to have a car here on campus, not everybody can say that. And, like I said, is not a particularly viable option. So in a county in which participates so heavily in early voting, in a county which has so much of its population revolving around campus, I find the decision to move the early voting location away from campus somewhat hard to defend. And whether it is the intention or not, it does disenfranchise the student population. Now, the fact that this was done during the summer is something that also raises even more questions in my mind. The fact that it was done in the middle of July, when nobody would be on campus, and quite frankly, only nerds like me would hear about it, it made me wonder about why that was made. And I have some theories as to why it was done at that time, none of which I will be voicing here. What I am going to do is ask earnestly for the commission to reconsider the moving of this polling location. Thank you, and I cede my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Madrill.
Hello today, Brazos County Commissioners Court. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Can you speak into the mic?
Hello, Brazos County Commissioners Court. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Robert Madriaga. I am a senior CS Engineering student at Texas A&amp;M University, and I'm also representative of Students for a Democratic Society, a progressive student-run activist org here on campus. Today, we are here in support of efforts to reinstate the MSC as an early voting location, as its removal has greatly affected campus workers and students' abilities to vote in the upcoming elections. The removal of the MSC as an early voting location acts to disenfranchise students and campus workers by creating a barrier for those without reliable transportation, especially because there is not any public transportation routes to and from City Hall and campus, especially because those with busy schedules such as classes and work. It makes it extremely inconvenient for them to travel off of campus at beginning or end of their workday. And for longtime voters, they may not even know of the removal of MSC as an early voting location. For students and campus workers, the MSC is a central, convenient, and accessible location for voting. With the nearest alternative being City Hall, a significant population of College Station students will not be forced to make a notable effort to participate in local, state, and national elections. We ask that if you care about these populations' abilities to vote, that you reinstate the MSC as an early voting location for the upcoming November elections. Thank you again for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Catbuck.
Howdy. I'm here to speak about the proposed FY 2023 budget. So I'm looking at the, got a screenshot of the statement required by local government code. Says the budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's by an amount of $14.42 million, which is a 15.28% increase from last year's budget. Now, I looked down further, and I see in the comparisons under the different categories, it looks like you've tried to inch those down a little bit on most of those. So definitely appreciate that. And I assume, please correct me, that the 15.2% increase is from the higher valuations that are everyone's seeing. Some of us have walked over from the appraiser's office to here, more or less, which like me. So my concern is that the 15.28% increase is something that we should not allow. It's just, we should be looking for something like 3% or 2% even. So what I'm looking for is, what I'm saying is, I will assure you all of my strong support in paring down these different category reductions even more so that there's not a 15% increase, but it's more like a 2 point X percent increase. I really appreciate y'all's work on this, and I know y'all do tons of work that nobody ever sees and thanks you for, so I appreciate y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ronnie Petula.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Ronnie Petula. I'm a citizen of Corton and Brazos County. In the limited time I have, I'd like to provide the court and the people here today a scenario of two different paths to the same issue, that is, how counties are dealing with property taxes. While block walking before the primaries, the number one issue that I was hearing was property tax, the property tax bills. People are well aware of the two components that comprise the tax bill, the property's evaluation and the tax rate. In your capacity as Commissioners, you only have control over one of these components, the tax rate. No one has control over the other, the property evaluation. It is a lost cause to successfully protest your evaluation in this environment. So in my opinion, it's left up to you, the Commissioners Court, to provide some sanity to this situation. I want to compare two counties with very similar demographics, Brazos County and McLennan County. Brazos County's population is about 230,000. McLennan is about 254,000. Brazos County's property value is $22.5 million. McLennan's about 24, $22.5 billion. McLennan is about $24 billion. Brazos County 2023 proposed tax rate is .48350, which is 1 cent lower than 2022. McLennan County's proposed tax rate is .3763, 5 cents lower than 2022, and almost 11 cents lower than Brazos County's. Brazos County raised more than $14.4 million, an increase of 15.28% over 2022. McLennan County raised more than $1.8 million, an increase of 2.18% over 2022. Brazos County is also adding $2.9 million in new property tax, new property, while McLennan County is adding about $2.6 million. Current total debt obligations to Brazos County is $81.1 million, which accounts for about 4 cents of our tax, our property tax. McLennan County is at $74.3 million, and they're at .028. This does not include the potential of another $100 million the citizens of Brazos County will be voting on in November, which would bring the total debt to about $181 million. Brazos County maintains about 479 miles of road. McLennan County maintains about 1,000 miles of road. Even our liberal friends over in Travis County are lowering their tax rate from 35 cents to 31 cents, a decrease of about 11%. Their tax rate would be 16 and 1/2 cents lower than Brazos County's per $100 valuation. Brazos County total 2023 proposed budget is $377 million, 66 more, million more than the adopted 2022 budget. This accounts for about $1,639 per capita, while Travis County, their budget is about $848 per capita. If we want to compete in economic development, we must be in line with our competition, which is the two counties I mentioned. I know these decisions are hard to make. Some citizens want to drive a Cadillac on a Hyundai budget. In these times of inflation and out-of-control liberal federal spending, I ask our Commissioners Court not to follow the federal government way by spending what we don't have. I ask the Commissioners Court to be conservative in their spending and allow our citizens to keep their money. Thank you for your time and for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shawna Cox.
Good morning. I'm standing before you as an average, middle-class citizen, and I'm here on property tax increase as well. I also block-walked for the Republican campaign, and I want you to know that that's what I heard too. Property taxes are too high. Property taxes are too high. Property taxes are too high, property taxes are too high, but here we are, y'all are trying to raise it. I do appreciate, as Mark said, that you have decreased some areas, but the truth is, we all, as average Americans, have had to tighten our budget with the inflation and the gas and everything else and I'm here to ask you to not burden us anymore, to also tighten your budget, at least for this time. We appreciate all that you do. We also appreciate having money in our pockets. I have lived in Brazos County for over 19 years. We moved here, my husband and I, with one little baby because we couldn't afford the city we lived in. We couldn't afford for me to stay home and raise our children. We moved here and as we've been here, everything has gotten higher and higher. I don't know how any college student can graduate and buy a house here and I don't think that's just here, it's unfortunately, the times that we live in. And as I am, as a family member and as an average citizen tightening my budget, I'm asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Medder?
Judge, I just love saying that.
Always.
Oh, liar, liar. All right, my name's Jay Medder. As y'all know, I'm a citizen of Brazos County. I'm also the Financial Fitness Director of the Brazos Valley. I am here to speak also on this property tax issue and not from a, from the standpoint of a homeowner, even though I don't like that part, but here's the thing. First of all, most of the nonprofits in this area are strapped for cash now because of everything that's been going on in terms of food prices, gas prices, rent prices going up. If we increase these property taxes, don't think for a second that those landlords will not pass that increase on to the renters. The low-income community, and let me give it to you this way, three years ago, we were able to get 18 people that had been on government assistance in their own home, okay? In the last two years, we haven't been able to get anyone. I take that back. I got one of my clients in their own home in the last two years. She got a job in West Texas and bought one out there and because she'd been working with me, had enough credit score and enough money put back to do that. I've got about 20 people right now that cannot find a home that is affordable in this area. The people that I've got that are renting homes are already maxed out as far as they can go. Our nonprofits are unable to help them because most of them are out of money. Catholic Charities, who still has a little bit of money, is in a bind because they don't have enough caseworkers that can work with the people that are behind on money. We've got an influx of non-citizens coming into this area. We have all these things going. Raising property taxes in this environment is throwing gasoline on an already surging flame. We need to figure something else out. Otherwise, you're hurting the low income, you're hurting the middle income in this situation, and you will be hurting any chances you ever have at getting reelected in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Lucas?
Hi, I'm Susan Lucas and I'm a citizen of Bryan in Brazos County. I am a middle-class person living in a middle-class neighborhood with quite a bit of diversity and in both age and in ethnicity. And I'm here to ask that you maintain or go to the no revenue increase tax rate of .284 because I have seen in my own neighborhood, two young families that have had to move out of my neighborhood recently. One ended up moving to another county to get a lower place to live. The other moved out and had to move into a rental unit, not thinking through the thought that their prices on the rental is going to go up, but at least it's going to give them a freeze for a year. These increases in taxes are going to drive younger and younger people and then even getting into the, some of the older age groups who are not yet retired, out of our community. And the last thing we need is to keep the age of the community. We need young people in our community, we need the people in the rental units that people can't afford a place yet to remain in our community. And so I ask that you go with the no income tax rate.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Jody Quimby?
I'm Jody Quimby. Me and my family have been here around 40 years. I wasn't born here, but I've enjoyed being here all that time. It's a great community. It can continue to be a great community if we don't have a situation where our local government outgrows us and more money means more government. I realize this, this notice that's, that was in the Eagle last week, y'all have all seen it, I hope everybody here has seen it, outlines the, the argument here that's been spoken of several times. The, the prospect of arranging the taxes up against the appraisals to result in 14 and a half million dollars extra money for the county, that's not a good thing, not in the eyes of me and all these other folks here. I don't, I don't imagine, does anyone here for this tax increase? Anybody? No. Okay? It's, it's pretty obvious that this is over, over what you should be doing. I have no idea what you deal with, with regard to expenses for the county. I know there's plenty, but we as individuals have expenses also. We've all, you and us as individuals, have been dealing with the difficult matters of expenses over these last few years. So the examples that Mr. Vitulie pointed out with other counties is very real. I didn't know that. I had no idea our rates were that much more than other counties and that's a bit embarrassing to tell you the truth. I don't know where the difference is realized, but you're elected, you're charged with the job of making the hard decisions and with respect to the expenses of the county, with what this notice in the Eagle has pointed out here, there's division on the, on the Commissioners Court here about how much money is available for expenses, okay? So I encourage you to get together and decide that you can make it with the funds you have. You may not be able to get down to this no new revenue rate, but we as citizens expect you to do that. So please, get your heads together, make a decision that will be equitable for everyone and we would hope that your new tax rate would be close to the no new revenue rate. Thank you for the time, thank you for your, for the energy you put into Brazos County for all of us.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, that's everybody I had listed. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Hearing none, we will consider and take action on agenda items three through 21. Number three is approval appointment of Jackie Flag of Brazos County to the Brazos County Child Welfare Board. Term of appointment is August 30, 2022 to August 30, 2025.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, Jackie's name is spelled incorrectly, it's J-A-C-U-E.
Thank you.
Okay.
J-A-C-Q-U-E.
I guess that maybe they sent it that way, that's the way it is here, but we'll, we'll get that correction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four, approval of the following job descriptions.
Move approval A through L?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is request from risk management for acceptance of donated funds in the amount of $7,277.25 from the Texas Association of Counties to be used for employee safety equipment.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is consider and discuss lifting the burn ban issued on June 28, 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
To...
Lift.
Do we want to have, okay, there's motion made. Jason, why don't you come up?
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. Jason Ware, Deputy EMC for Brazos County. We are in a lot better position than we were a couple of weeks ago. We are getting some, some rain. We were more than, you know, than we anticipated, so we're in a lot better position. I have spoken with the volunteer fire chiefs, all but, all but one requesting to lift the burn ban. We are responding to a lot of illegal burns right now and so the citizens are obviously starting to burn, but we will do as, as requested, but it is the recommendation to lift the burn ban today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's certainly greened up my area.
No kidding.
Yeah.
It's amazing how fast things respond, isn't it?
Yeah. So we got a motion, I believe in a second, to remove the burn ban. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven, approval of annual agreement with Clinical Psychology Services between TAMU and Brazos County Detention Center Commissary Fund.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is approval of the Brazos County Clerk's Records Management and Archival Plan to collect $10 fee for non-court filings.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is request from Sheriff's Office for approval of Diner's Club card for Patrick Montoya with a limit of $1,000 for county emergency use.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of contract 22-160 for Image Learning LLC for juvenile.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of contract 22-164 for residential treatment services, long-term with Mylan County.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12 is approval of contract 22-165 residential treatment services, short-term with Mylan County.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is permission to advertise bid number CIP 22-555, security key management system.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number 14 is approval of renewal 23-014R for vending machines for Brazos County buildings with Accent Foods and PepsiCo.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Did we go out for bids again on this?
This is a renewal of the existing contract that we did go out and solicit bids for, proposals for, so this is within the original realm of that solicitation.
So we did not go out again?
Not, not at this time, but we will in the, in the near future. We don't, we typically allocate a period of time that the contract is good for and the number of renewals allowable, and so this is an extension of that. But we will in the, I don't know, I don't have it up the top of my head, but we will in the near future.
Okay, good enough, thanks Charles.
Did we vote on that?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is approval of final plot Block 1, Lot 1R, Metta's Phase 2, being a replat of Block 1, Lots 1 and 2, Metta's Phase, the Metta's Phase 2, 2.299 acre, C Rainey Survey 2, A-201 and the A Miller Survey, A-165, City College Station ETJ, Brazos County, Texas sites located precinct 1.
Move approval?
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is acceptance of special warranty deed for, from Walter and Christina Roberts for 1.564 acres of land to be used for improvement of Sandy, Sand Creek Road, sites located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is request permission to enter private property owned by William L. Davis IV on Sand Creek Road in order to replace roadway culvert and perform earthwork to improve drainage sites located precinct 2.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is tax refund application for the following...
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19, budget amendment, set by 21/22 budget amendments 45.01 through 45.09.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, sir Judge. Yeah, I'm a little confused and I should have talked to our auditor's office earlier, but there's on 45.08, it is listed as 362nd District Court for one of the items, so I think we need to change that to 361st. But then I was also confused because I couldn't sort out which ones were for 272nd District Court and which ones were for, I know about the upgrade and why we were doing it, but I was just a little confused in the way they were presenting it, but the first thing was is it does say 362nd District Court there and I'd like to make sure we correct that.
We created a new court without you knowing.
And, and we, yeah, and without the legislature's permission and all that stuff too, yes.
And this is a project, this project is already completed, but we're asseting everything and so it was caught that certain objects that were bought should be asseted and moved to the correct division and...
Okay, and that's what it was. I just couldn't understand it from the way things are presented on there and I apologize for taking the court's time and asking you that, but I did want to correct that 360, that new additional court that we created and put it into a court we already have. Thank you.
We'll correct it on our end.
Thank you.
Okay, with those corrections, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change of status.
Move approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8117187 through claim number 8117361 and claim number 9005638 through claim number 9005686.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is acknowledgement of FY, YF 2021, 2022 budget for actials by fund as of August 24, 2022. 23 is acknowledgement of monthly reports submitted by, submitted in August 2022. And number 24 is juvenile director's report on inmate population.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners. We currently have 32 juveniles in detention, 24 males, 8 females, and we have 33 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. 25 is sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. 651 today, 538 males, 113 females. We have 60 on electronic monitoring with 11 pending.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I've got a couple of things. The first is just a thank you to Operations Safe Shield and Silas Garrett Shop for installing the bulletproof glass in local cars. I understand that it's a slow start, but we're moving forward on that now, I appreciate that. Judge, the second thing is, I spoke to staff, I believe that we've already made the decision on not having the MSC as a polling place for this year. Is there any chance that that decision could be reversed for this year?
Well, I mean, we shouldn't have discussion about it, but...
It's not on the agenda.
Well, I'm just, no, I'm asking, would it be possible for us to put it on the agenda and be able to discuss it? Or if, I think staff told me that it's...
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that would be a future, maybe some future year, but not...
Well, that's what I, that's my point, is that I think if we discussed it, we... Well, that's what I, that's my point, is that I think if we discussed it, we'd be discussing a future year, not this year.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Are we sure on that? I mean, is, have we passed some type of statutory deadline?
Yes.
And we've passed the statutory deadline for November?
I believe we were at the deadline when we made the decision.
Yeah. Okay, I was not familiar with that, but I would be also in support of a future agenda item in lieu of the input that we've had here from people and that I've heard just anecdotally in the community that we reconsider that for future elections.
We got a little bit of time, you know, but I'm sure that'll probably come up.
Yes.
Judge, the only other thing that I wanted to discuss, and these citizens that came and spoke today about the budget, I still feel like that we haven't really negotiated as a Commissioners' Court. I mean, I think three of the Commissioners just set the rate that they thought should be right, and I'm asking, is there any possibility, Judge, that we could have further negotiation on the budget, or is it, since we've taken a three to two vote, are we set?
Well, we're not, we haven't actually passed the budget yet. The proposed budget was passed, so...
But I mean, but we've got public hearing nine o'clock on the morning that we have on the agenda item, approval of the budget and approval of the tax rate, and there's just not a whole lot of time to consider in between one and the other if we're going to amend the tax rate. And I would also, if there's time within our seventy-two hours of notification, that we have another open discussion on, particularly, not as much on the budget, but on the tax rate, and that's my issue, and I would like for that information to be more publicly presented than it was when we just talked about it in a workshop. I'd like for it to be a discussion where we have an open session like this, and also in that discussion, ask for input from the public relative to this on that particular topic.
Commissioner Colley, I acknowledge what you're saying. I know that I voted, that we voted. What my real question is, is there any avenue for negotiation? In other words, obviously, three of you want the point four eight three five. Commissioner Aldrich has said that he would be more than satisfied with a four four three five rate. I've not even had an opportunity to ask in a public forum, would there be any flexibility on behalf of the court? That's my question. I know we voted.
Well...
I think we're discussing something that's not on the agenda at this point.
Right.
No, I mean, this is on the agenda because in, it says announcement of possible future agenda topics, and we could put this on a agenda for discussion within our seventy-two hour notification requirement prior to the August, I'm sorry, September sixth meeting.
May I just say, we are up against deadlines, and I'm not sure that we can, Commissioner Ford, but we have been advised that we're, you know, we're right at the deadline to get it taken care of this year.
I believe that we have to have a certain number of days after it's published in the paper before it can be held, and I think we've missed that deadline.
Yes.
I'm not talking about...
Excuse me. So we're gone past announcement of future interest items into a discussion.
Yeah, discussion, that's my concern, too.
That we're not...
Yeah, yeah.
So the question is still exactly the same. Could this be a future interest item? I think that Commissioner Colley and Commissioner Berry just said it cannot be a future interest item.
Not for this year, no.
Okay. Any other announcement of interest item? Hearing none. Number Twenty-seven is call... Oh, come on up.
I'm gonna look at Bruce while I say this. You can call a special called session with seventy-two hour notice, correct? Public hearing has to be published five days in advance in the newspaper, and we cannot delay the vote beyond September sixth. We have ten days from proposed to adoption.
So we all have time.
But...
We have to be very careful about Open Meetings Act.
But what you just stated, to me, does not preclude a special session.
I did say that a special session...
Because we already have the five-day notice of the public hearings.
Requires seventy-two notice.
This would be a special session. It would not be a public hearing, but in a special session, we could have input from the public as well as a part of our meeting.
A special session could be called within a seventy-two hour notice. Not trying to be obtuse, being factual.
No, I just want to know, just the facts, ma'am, just the facts.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be possible for us to have seventy-two hours notice if we were to call that special meeting.
Okay.
And I know we can't vote on whether to do that or not do that, but I do believe that we could, it is possible. Thank you for bringing that fact.
You've been in on September sixth as the deadline.
Okay. Twenty-seven is call for system input and/or concerns. Hearing none. The next item is to adjourn. Thank you.